Welcome to the Town of Mount Airy Planning Commission Meeting. The date is March 25, 2024. It is now 7:15. This evening's Planning Commission meeting, as announced, will begin with two public hearings. The first at 7:15 this time for the public to approach the microphone and make any comment relative to the Planning Commission's requirement within the code to provide a decision on the priority water areas of the town for the next two years, 2024 and 2025. The code entry on this is Code 109-19.4B Bravo. And in that code, it stipulates that every two years at its regularly scheduled meeting in January with due notice and after a public hearing, the Planning Commission shall by resolution designate priority areas within the limits of the town to which the town desires to direct future development. With that introduction, then I offer the microphone to your left for those that wish to approach and make known their comments on that topic only. Once again, this is an opportunity for the public hearing on the topic of the priority water areas per the code.
Oh, good.
Thank you. If I may ask just your name, please?
I'm Diane McCollough. We live outside the town limits. And I just, I'll stand corrected, but from my memory, the development we're talking about is whether or not it's commercial or residential. It's both for this or only residential?
No, ma'am. We're identifying what area or areas within the town limits where the commission wants to focus the priority for water allocation.
Okay, so if, excuse me? Okay, so one thing that I wanted to bring up, we have a new car wash that's coming. And when they presented that to the Planning Council Committee, they stated for approval because they had recyclable water and what their needs were. And it was approved with that. And then they came back and said they needed more allocation of water.
So ma'am, we're actually talking about these two maps here that are currently up on here? We're not actually talking about the Beck property or Mount Airy Crossing right now?
No, I'm not talking about that either. I'm talking about the current car wash, the shiny bright or whatever.
Shiny shell.
Shiny shell.
Yeah, so if I may, that's a great topic. And that's 6,300 gallons, if I know the matrix well enough. Scared me. That topic and that allocation would be a great comment, Ms., during the commission's discussion down the agenda where we-
Okay, thank you.
Right. We'll be talking about what's called the yield capacity allocations of both water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
And that particular business and that need is actually within the matrix that the town engineer has formed a recommendation.
All right, thank you.
No, no problem. Once again, this is on the priority areas for water within the town limits. Seeing no further public hearing, I close the public hearing portion of this evening. We will have the second public hearing at 7:30.
7:30.
And that public hearing is on the topic I just mentioned, and that is the total yield allocation into the 13 categories per the code. Thank you. This is the Town of Mount Airy Planning Commission Public Hearing Number Two this evening. This topic for this public hearing is with regard to the water category allocations as recommended by the town engineer. This, again, is a requirement for the Planning Commission to provide the council a recommendation on that allocation across 13 categories in the code in paragraph 109-19 dot 4A. And with that lead-in and with John showing where that allocation has been recommended by the town engineer, I open now for any public comment. If you could approach the mic up here toward your left, state your name, and I will try to limit you to two minutes. Once again, asking anyone who wishes to make public comment relative to the water allocation categories for 2024 and 2025 for the town of Mount Airy.
She's back.
Everybody's saying, "Go up there now." Is this the time that I speak?
Please, your name again, Ms.?
Diane McCollough.
Diane, welcome.
I just wanted to state that, you know, the town has repeatedly had issues with water and water allocation and the safety of our water. And when we have businesses come forward and say they need X amount of allocation of water, and that business has done and built many other businesses. This isn't the first time. So they kind of had a guesstimate and then gave us a figure and then came back and said it wasn't enough. So I think that we have to really keep that in mind when we're making decisions to reallocate more water to a business who has history. We have also, we have another car wash within a block down the street. So we know some of the consumption of water that we had from that one, that we take into consideration that, you know what, what we allocated was, I'm making it up because I'm a nurse, I'm not a water allocator person, but, you know, we gave you 5,000 gallons a day. When you exceed that 5,000 gallons a day, then you have to shut down your business. We can't keep pulling from a valuable resource that we need for our own survival as well. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think that, you know, to look at the bigger picture and making sure that when businesses come forward with what they're proposing that they're going to need because they recycle and things like that, that we have some kind of a firm stand that we can't continue to just say, "Okay, yeah, we'll give you a little bit more." Thank you.
Any others wishing to make public comment with regard to this topic on the water and sewer allocations for the next two years? Seeing no further interest, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing, and I will move to go ahead and call to order this month's Planning Commission meeting for the Town of Mount Airy. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As I always try to do, I want to welcome everyone that took their time this evening to join us here and also to those that are watching the livestream. It's important that the public be involved with the decisions and agenda items for the Planning Commission, quite naturally. Our first order of business is to review and approve the minutes from the February 26 monthly meeting. I will pause here to allow my fellow commissioners to refresh their review of those minutes. And then if a commissioner wishes to make a motion either to approve or disapprove the minutes, I am listening.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes, as is.
A motion's been made. Do I have a second? Mr. Butts has seconded. The motion is to approve the minutes of the February 26 meeting. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The approval is unanimous. The next agenda item for this meeting, as it is for all our meetings, is to now open for any public comment on items not included on this evening's agenda. There will be time allotted by me for any of those agenda topics for public input. So I do ask if you could limit any interest in talking now to items not on the current evening's agenda. And if you approach the microphone, just give us your name, please, and I will try to limit you to roughly two minutes. Seeing no interest, then I close the citizen comment portion of this evening's agenda and move now into input from our county liaisons. I think I saw Justin.
Hannah's here.
Oh, there she is. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Carroll County first. Hannah, please, if you could come forward. Ms. Weber?
She was hiding.
Just some updates from Carroll County. The CTP priority letter was approved by our county commissioners and sent to the State Department of Transportation. We sent it to the state for delegate signatures, and then that'll be their approval. And hopefully, the CTP plan will be put out sometime later this year, and that's when we'll see what projects were selected from around the state for funding.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. And of course, for everybody here, our part of that is number five.
Yeah.
And could you explain that?
So the priority letter is something that every county in Maryland puts together, and it's state roads that need fixing or enhancements or improvements. And they base it based off a list of priorities. So in Carroll County, there's five priorities right now, and Maryland 27 is number five out of five.
For widening from the southern limit of the county border to LaShire Drive?
Yes, and I believe there was some discussion about bringing it farther up to Gillis Falls. It's my understanding that Commissioner Guerin talked to somebody at the town to include that in next year's letter. So I think that'll be on our radar next year. The water and sewer amendment that you all sent back to the county will be in front of our Planning Commission in April, and hopefully, our county commissioners approve that in May, and that will be sent to MDE for their final approval after that. We are still working on collecting some dates for the housing study. John's been a really great resource. What the consultants are trying to do is schedule an event at the same time as a town event. So kind of drawing two different events. So say there, I think there's like a market coming up. If the consultants for the housing study could have a table there, then you'll get more people than, say, people that just wanted to go talk about a housing study. So still working on those dates. Hopefully, next month, I'll have those firm for citizens to attend. And then lastly, we are having our first-ever employee expo. This will be at the county office building on Wednesday, April 10 at 5:00. This is for any prospective employees that want to come see what it's like to work at Carroll County. It's a great place to work. So that'll be our first-ever one, April 10 at 5:00. That's it for me.
This will be your first?
Yeah, our first ever, yeah.
I open the floor to any commissioner who wish to ask Ms. Weber any questions on Carroll County planning. Thank you so much, Hannah.
Thank you.
County liaison to the commission is Justin. Welcome, Justin.
I'll start off with the Cromwell Site Plan. I mentioned this last time. It's an age-restricted development. It received site plan approval for 184 townhomes and 112 multifamily units. The water resource element, it's one of our comprehensive planning elements. It was in front of the Planning Commission on March 20. The presentation was focused on equity, stormwater, and climate change. The municipal planners' quarterly meeting was held on March 21. There's no new development reviews for the next Planning Commission meeting in terms of developments in the New Market region. One item to keep an eye out for it was on our development public hearing and applications portal. There's an application for the Berrywine Plantations. An existing building's going to be replaced with a new office building, and it's still waiting revisions. And that I'm working on updating the pipeline for the next quarter. I created this map just to kind of demonstrate the amount of permits that were approved. And if you can zoom out a little bit, like the more transparent the circle is, the more developed it is. So you can see Ligonore Eaglehead is the biggest one. That's 4,518 permits, and it's halfway done. And the new projects that are coming on the way, which are the Gordon Mill, Cromwell, which was just got the site plan approval, Calumet, and Cherry Run are all in the pipeline. Cherry Run is still, I think that still is going through the approval process, but everything else has been done. And so you're looking about, I think it's like 600 for the Cromwell, Gordon Mills, and the other ones are closer to 1,000 units.
Commissioner, questions?
Justin, how many, you said 184 townhouses, and what was the other one?
112.
112, okay.
And they're all, that was, there are still single-family homes that are part of it, but it was just the site plan approval was for the townhomes and the multifamily.
And sticking with Cromwell, that is deed-restricted senior housing solely?
Yeah, but it is age-restricted.
Okay.
What, do you know what age?
I do not know off the top of my head.
No further questions? Thank you so much, Justin. Our next item is to, on the heels of the public hearing opportunity at 7 PM, is to now have discussions with regard to the commission's recommendation on the priority area for water. This is going to become Resolution 2024-01. This requirement of the Planning Commission, as I mentioned earlier, is every two years. It is a recommendation that begins with the town engineer. So Barney is here. And there is also, we can reflect on what was done in 2022, two years ago, to kind of see what the trend is within the town. And toward that, John has provided us a side-by-side.
That's correct. This is, and Barney doesn't have any influence on the priority map. He's just with the actual categories.
Right.
So this is all Planning Commission. Again, on the left-hand side, you'll see the 2022 in a large format. Again, so this has changed from the 2022 to 2024. The purple, again, is the 2024. And you can notice that because the Beck property is bringing in their own water, that the Planning Commission, in a meeting, decided to remove that section out of the Beck property, and that's why this is not illuminated down here. So it's basically concentrating on the downtown zone and up Center Street, including some of the industrial properties and community commercial properties that already exist. Some are undeveloped currently, some are in the need of redevelopment.
Got you. And again, for the public, the definition of a priority area is those areas within the town limits designated by the Planning Commission, which the town desires to direct future development. So with that and the submission before the commissioners, I will entertain a motion with regard to approval or disapproval of the staff recommendation on the priority area for the next two years.
Make a motion to approve the priority funding area, or priority, start over. I'll make a motion, request favorable approval for the 2024 priority area map.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Binick. I will open it to discussion on that motion. Is there any discussion? Clarity? Hearing no discussion. The motion is to approve the priority area for 2024 and 2025. All those in favor of approving the priority area presented by the town staff signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nay. It passes unanimously. Now we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the town engineer's forte. And so if I may ask, Barney, could you lead us into this topic?
So the town council approved that we have an available water capacity yield of 38,798 gallons a day. And that is now to be distributed into 13 categories, as per the code. List of projects in the memo, that is things that are on the horizon or things that are in the process that may be coming through, that will get added to the list. And in fact, I think some of them are already on the list. They just don't have the amounts put in there until those have been finalized. The recommendations for the categories, we didn't change a lot, except that somebody had brought up Chinese Shell. Diane had brought up Chinese Shell in the public hearing, but that utilized a good chunk of the, almost all of the allocation in the revitalization and redevelopment category. So all we're doing is, we recommend it, take, put 5,000 gallons per day back into that category and take it from 1,250 from four different categories to make up for it. So those are the only changes that are being recommended here. So you see all the allocations that are in the end of the memo that you're approving. And this is just a list of all the projects since 2014 that have gone onto the water allocation table for, you know, projects that have been approved, or the last few are just ones that are anticipated.
And the total amount of 81,000 gallons per day is a carryover from 2014?
Yes, which has been reduced to the 38,798.
Reduced by way of our 12% mandatory drought reserve?
No, reduced by what's been allocated since 2014, everything on this chart.
Okay.
So you see the bottom line, 38,798. Top of that same column is 81,000. So everything that's been subtracted from that.
Right there. Got you. And for the public's interest, would you mind just saying what MDE has approved for all 11 well productions for us, gallons per day?
Yes, so today we have 927,000 gallons a day, of which we have 38,000 available to allocate.
To allocate.
For future projects.
Good.
John, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Given the town engineer's explanation and the matrix in front of us, do I have a motion whether to approve or disapprove the town engineer's recommendation for the next two years' water allocation across the 13 categories?
I'd move to approve.
Mr. Butts has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hatley has seconded it. I am now open for any further discussion on the motion to approve the town engineer's water allocations. Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor of approving the town engineer's water allocation for the next two years signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Nay. Hearing none, it is passed unanimously. Moving along, our next item is an introduction of an application at 2501 Backacre Circle. The contractor by the name of Canyon Contractor has built a pole building on their site two years ago, and the Planning Commission, at that time, two years ago, made the motion that this business must come back and see if an amended site plan would be required based upon their actions on that parcel.
That's correct.
And so if I could turn to John to walk us into the details, please?
Sure, again, this is, and again, do we have a representative from, you want to come up to the table, please, introduce yourself, starting off?
Evening. Jake Keller, Canyon Contracting, president, owner of the property.
Thank you. So, yes, so two years ago, this was brought in front of Planning Commission because they were constructing a building without a building permit. They came to the Planning Commission for approval to build this temporary shed. And one of the comments or one of the recommendations from one of the Planning Commission members was, in a two-year period, to have it come back in front of Planning Commission to determine if an amended site plan needed to be followed through for this redesign of the site. Initial site plan had a large, I'm not sure of the size of the building, that was-
It's 12,500 feet.
The original building, it was Building A, was 12,000, over 12,000 square feet. They've located this new shed in a position where it's encompassing the footprint of that Building A.
It's actually not, it's behind it, but-
Is it? Because the plan sort of shows it as it's-
Yeah, it's behind it. But it's, I mean, it's a, we put it up as a temporary shed, so.
Okay. So again, so normally, on a building permit, or a site plan, if you don't receive a building permit in a certain period of time, that site plan becomes null and void. So, you know, and this is a unique situation because they did obtain a building permit for Building B. So Building A is sort of in limbo currently. We could not find any bonding for this project for Building A on our, in our files. So I don't think they've ever went through with a connection to Building A or bonding for Building A. So the question really is to be, do we require them to do an amended site plan to show the shed or the removal of Building A? I'm not sure of the overall plan of what you're looking to do in the future, if you're looking to potentially build Building A. If you are, then we're going to have to come back through and do a resubmission of that building because stormwater management regs might have changed or other approvals might need to be gone through again to make sure that you're still in compliance with state and federal and county regulations. So really, the task in front of you is to determine if an amended site plan should be applied for or go through the process for approval through the town, the county, to make sure it's still in compliance with all regulations. Or to allow them to leave the plan as it is and not show the shed on any amended plat or plan until they want to move forward with Building A. So-
We actually did do that. We marked the drawing, or we marked this building and its actual as-built location on the site plan and submitted it to you all two years ago. You guys had that, and that's what approved it two years ago.
Okay.
We just obtained our county final building inspection, which this is supposed to be a temporary storage shed until we build the new building, in which case that building will come down. It's basically just an overflow storage building. The county has since made us put in a third-
The county has since made us put in a 30 by 30 concrete parking pad with handicap bathrooms, handicap parking, a sidewalk leading around to the front of it to obtain our building, or to obtain our final inspection. And those changes were specific to the pole building shed? They were, yes, and they were specific to the requirements of the county. Okay. And stormwater management review didn't make, it didn't change from? Because the square footage wasn't big enough. And the stormwater management was put in on Lot 9A when we built our other building. So originally, it was Lot 9, 10, and 11 when the original site plan approval amended to encapsulate Lot 9A, to encapsulate 9 and 10, when we built 2501. I see. This was a temporary building shed. So the town defines temporary as anything without a foundation. This is a pole building. It has wood in the ground, but it doesn't have a concrete foundation. We asked for a waiver upfront. You guys wouldn't give it to us, so we went ahead and got the building permit for it. If I'd have put up a, you know, a Quonset hut or a tarped type building with no foundation, you guys don't require a building permit. So this thing's kind of escalated to a point of beyond just a 24 by 24 storage building. There's no intention to keep the building. Once the new, once the approved plan for the original building would go in, right, because there's not room for it. So all we're asking is that we're able to leave that until which time we file for the building permit for the other building. We're just not in a position to build it right now. And if I, and if I may, so 2016 was the original site plan.
Okay.
Right? And the pole building?
Went in '22.
Went in '22.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And between 2016 and 2022, more than two years, there weren't any, prior to 2022's work permit, there weren't any other work permits pertaining to that portion of your site? Is that?
Not that lot, no.
Not that lot?
No, sir.
Okay.
Just the, just the building at 2501, which is Canyon's headquarters.
Right. And what I'm trying to do is just get, get to the brass tacks.
Gotcha.
Right? And so as it was mentioned, our code does require that within a two-year period of a site plan approval, work permits have to be gained for construction on that or the site plan is, is dead.
Correct, but they did obtain a building permit to build 2501, which is part of the original site. And that's sort of what I was saying in my staff report is that, you know, if they move forward with Building A, they'll have to tear down the shed, the temporary shed.
That's right.
And build Building A. But they still need to get approvals through the town, through the county.
Right.
To make sure that they're in compliance with stormwater management. If they did add as-built drawings, and I'm not aware of those, but they, because that goes through Carroll County, then they might have already designed the site to support the stormwater management for Building A.
It is, and it's in. The stormwater management is in and approved. And A, we developed it when we developed the rest of the lot. So all three lots, the old 9, 10, and 11, all stormwater management is in. For the bigger building. Yeah, we moved in, we got our U and O on 2501 in February of 19, I believe we moved in. Right, right. So let me just back up to some fundamentals. Do we have a current approved valid site plan for that lot?
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
Yes.
Does it show Building A? Or has it been amended to also show the pole shed? We amended it and submitted it to you back before we got the bill, two years ago.
In '22.
Yes, in '22. Whether you guys approved it or not, I don't know. I'd have to ask Ron, but. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm, do we have that?
I don't recall seeing one. And when we looked in the file, we didn't see anything.
We have it. You guys made me do a whole as-build of where it was and show directional lines and everything else. You do have a copy of that? So, okay, so so you said you did amend the plan to show and got a permit to construct the temporary building?
Yep, and the permit's been finalized.
Right. And, and so where we are here tonight is the decision by this commission as to whether you need to submit an amended plan again to reflect that building?
Okay.
Is?
Is that the request?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
Where's the request?
That's what you're putting in front of us, right?
Right, that's what the one Planning Commission member in 2022 was just mentioning, if in two years they should come back in and see if they have to do an amended site plan. Now, again, if they submitted an amended site plan, it might have been part of the permit process, but not an actual amended plat.
Okay.
Or amended site plan. So the verbiage is, gets kind of peculiar. So again, it gets delicate and I don't know if, again, this is an overall site, 9, 10, and 11, which was combined into Lot 9A, which encompasses all three lots.
No, just 9 and 10, 11.
9, 10, I'm sorry.
11 is still a separate, buildable lot.
My bad. So they've been combined as one lot, 9A. Building B, which has been erected, is currently on that lot. Building A was still approved to be located on the west side of this parcel. And again, they did obtain a building permit to build the one building on Lot 9A. So it gets into even priority install, very similar. You know, they built a portion of the building. They still have two wings of that building that could come back in later when they're more financially stable to build those additions. And they were part of the original approved site plan. And they did obtain a building permit to allow the construction of at least a portion of the building. And that's why I'm recommending to not require them to do an amended site plan at this time. Because again, they do have an approved site plan with both Building A and Building B. And they would still have to go through approvals at the staff level at least, and the county approval, to make sure they are still in compliance with stormwater management regs for Building A, as long as they don't change the. If they change the footprint of Building A and reduce it or enlarge it, then it would have to go back through the whole.
Amendment.
That would be an amended site plan. It would have to go through the whole process of approvals through you guys, et cetera.
I think I got it. All for a temporary shed.
Yeah. Tear down with the ban.
Right, and we're going to tear down when we build the other building. Well, contrary to my usual procedure here, we usually, we discuss it after a motion's made. But because of the complexity, and this is being brought to us from a commission decision two years ago, I would like to open it to any other commissioner that's trying to get clarity on the, on the ask here. Is there?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So you were saying that the shed itself has concrete around it for parking or a parking lot?
The county just made us put a pad in for handicap accessibility.
Okay, but the shed is not on a pad?
The shed has a slab inside of it.
Okay.
Yes.
So the, the structure of the shed is a pole building, so it actually has 12 by 12 wooden posts that are in the ground.
Right.
We don't see that as a foundation.
Right.
You know, it's not a.
And your code, yeah, your code says foundations are, you know, concrete foundations. That's why we can say temporary shed.
Okay.
Okay.
It'd be permanent for 30 years, 40 years.
Right.
Potentially.
Just because it's still on a concrete, there's still a slab on it inside the shed?
Yep.
Right.
Just inside, not part of the foundation.
It's just the floor, it's not the structure.
Structure, okay.
It's almost like a large pavilion.
Yeah.
Right.
Walls and a roof.
Or extra stuff. The roof held up by poles.
Right.
Okay, you got it. Okay. Any other commissioner discussion or clarity needed? So to reiterate, the town staff recommendation is that we not require them to amend the site plan?
Correct.
Okay, and, and that if there are, if, if you do decide to take down the temporary building and proceed with completing Building A, the larger building, you understand the procedures for?
Yes, sir.
For that?
Yes, sir.
Okay? The destruction of a shed, et cetera? Okay?
We understand that.
And again, that'll come through me for approval. And I'll make sure that the building they're proposing meets the approved site plan that was previously approved by Planning Commission. And they obtained a building permit within, I'm sure they asked for an extension to get it to the 2018 construction start. And then the 2019 completion when they took occupancy of that building.
And encompassing all of this, we do have confidence we have a currently town-approved site plan with an amendment showing the pole shed right now that, that we could produce for you.
And again, that potentially is with Carroll County, is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Because we don't remember receiving an amended site plan showing that. But it was potentially part of the building permit process through Carroll County showing that shed location.
Got you. Okay. We're, we're trying to be righteous.
Understood.
And, and we're trying real hard to follow the code. And, and as one commissioner has reminded me, it's important to be consistent when we, when we have to deal with these, these kinds of matters. So you want to restate your recommendation before I ask for a motion?
Sure. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission not require an amended site plan for the existing pole barn constructed at the location of the proposed Building A as shown on S16-0019.
Got you. Thank you, John. Is there a motion from a commissioner?
I will make the motion that we do not require an amended site plan for the existing pole barn constructed at the location of the proposed Building A.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Binick, second. The motion is not to require an amended site plan from Canyon Contracting for the pole barn on their site plan. All those in favor of not requiring an amended site plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Hearing none, it is not required that you amend. And it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Finally.
Our next agenda item is 2310 Backacre Circle. This is King Sports Request for the approval of a monument sign and the dedication plaque to be part of that monument sign located at Lot 15A in the Twin Arch Business Park. If the applicant could, if they're present, you're welcome to come forward.
I did receive an email this afternoon that they're actually had left the town and went to New York City. And I don't see Ron Thompson here. And he was supposed to be representing them. So I think maybe we need to possibly postpone this action. Unless there's an applicant here for 2310 Backacre Circle? Please come forward.
Hearing none?
Yeah, I think we should just postpone this. And I'll reach out to them and let them know. Well, and the discrepancies that we were coming across as well. And I'll let them know how to move forward with the reapplication.
Tom, is it proper that we ask for a motion to postpone? Okay, I will inertation, inertation. Entertain a motion from a commissioner to postpone this agenda item until the applicant can assure their attendance at a next Planning Commission meeting.
I would so move.
It's been moved by Mr. Butts, seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Hatley. The motion is to postpone this item until the applicant can assure us of their attendance at a next Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Hearing none, it's unanimous that we postpone this item. We're moving right along, and our next agenda item is an item, I'll give a bit of background, and then I will ask for John to give us some added detail. And then I will ask for the applicant and his or her representatives to join us up here. This next item has to deal with the revised pre-concept plan for Mount Arrie Crossing, also known as the Beck Property. As a bit of background from me, before I turn to John, on February 13th, a joint workshop, per the code, was held with the council and commission members at the Mount Arrie Volunteer Fire Department Reception Hall, where with the applicant, we discussed aspects of the plan that was presented at that time. At the end of that meeting, the town submitted questions to basically capture the comments and issues raised by the council commissioner, mayor, and the town staff. And the applicant then responded. I don't have that date on the top of my head, but soon thereafter, in March, the applicant responded with their answers and along with the answers of revised plan. In that closure, it was understood that the council would like for this commission to provide a recommendation as to whether another session of the joint workshop is required. I'll use the phrase a continuance of it rather than say a second workshop. So we have entered into the stage of this plan's process where we have now got the collaboration of your council and your commissioners here discussing with the applicant the pre-concept plan. And so we're here tonight in receipt of the revisions and their answers from that first session. And our task is very narrowly focused on providing the council for their April meeting whether we believe there needs to be continued discussions within the joint workshop arrangement, the collaborative group of council, mayor, town staff, and of course, your commissioners here. Now, the agenda item didn't specifically say Q and A regarding those new plans or responses. However, I personally don't believe, and I'll turn to the town attorney for a differing opinion. I don't believe any of the commissioners here can form a decision as to whether we need to continue the workshop without possibly asking the applicant for clarity on what has been presented. I think it's fair to make this decision. Are we good enough with what has already happened on February 13th and with the information now provided by the applicant? Or do we need to go another round and continue that joint collaborative interaction with the applicant? That's the question in front of us. And again, I think it's fair that I want to provide each commissioner an opportunity to get to that in their own head if they need to ask questions of clarity with the applicant. Town attorney, is that a fair statement?
Yes, I agree with what you're saying.
I will now move to those portions of tonight's interaction, which may, and I don't want to invoke this or advocate this, but which may lead to a commissioner saying, could you do this differently? That's not a question of clarity to form an opinion on continuance. That's actually asking the applicant to consider yet another set of revisions. So I'm doing this very carefully so you can stay kind of where I am on going beyond questions for clarity to decide continuance to now throwing ideas about major concept changes to a pre-concept plan. And in that vein, and I will again turn to the town attorney, we are now in the realm where that is best done in the collaborative joint workshop. And Tom, if I could ask for your opinion on that?
Again, I agree. I, I think that going to recommendations from commission members to the developer about changes to this revised plan likely goes beyond the agenda item that's listed, number one. Number two is probably best done in a joint workshop fashion where members of the public understand what's going to happen and have an opportunity to be present for, for that kind of interaction. So obviously, if you have those things, that may inform your vote as to what to recommend. But I agree.
And so if those are the parameters of now this agenda item, I could ask the applicant and any representatives, Mr. Wagner, Ms. Bedwell? and any representatives, Mr. Wagner, Ms. Bedwell? And if I may ask for both of you, for the public, if you could just quickly identify yourselves?
Sure. Clark Wagner with Pleasantz Development.
Cecily Bedwell with Design Collective.
Welcome. And John, if you have anything further to add, I'll ask you to throw in. If not, then I'll turn to the applicant for a quick five-minute where we are tonight.
I think you covered the intro pretty much what I had written down to where we're at today. So I would defer to the applicant.
Mr. Wagner, Ms. Bedwell, if you have any comments, if I could ask for five minutes, please?
Sure. Just to review what we submitted on March 8th, as you stated earlier, revised pre-concept sketch plans and that the scope of those plans have expanded a bit. We have several sheets that are what we call the illustrative plan, what you're seeing on the screen. We have two sheets of open space plans that show where the various open spaces are located and we included some images of potential amenities. We didn't want to get into the concept plan stage with amenities discussion, but we decided to give you this just to give some idea of what could go in the various open spaces. We also provided a comment response to the 120 comments that we got at the last workshop, which was a lengthy process for us to go through, but you have that information. We updated the fact sheet that has the density, open space, and land use calculations. We included a portion of the Fair Housing, Housing for Older Persons Act guidelines or law regarding age restricted housing and we gave a, we provided a short synopsis of the demand in the market for senior housing that was provided by one of our in-house marketing people. Otherwise, I guess we're here to answer any questions. We did give you an outline or a list of what's changed on the plan and so if, you know, if you want us to go through that, we certainly can or we can just be available for questions or clarifications.
Ralph, I will, I just want to say that what you submitted is on the town website if anybody's interested in looking at it or reviewing it, except for the letter that was received late on Friday, which I will get up onto the website tomorrow.
Correct.
With the clarity on what was changed from the previous pre-concept sketch plan.
And there was a quick revision correction to that?
There was, yeah. We got our east and west backwards.
I saw.
Lot, for some reason.
Anything further leading up to this? Again, I just emphasize, our task is to make a recommendation on continuance of the joint workshop combined effort regarding this application. At this point, I would open for any public comment relative to this revised plan and what's been made available to the public after the workshop. I would ask that you restrict it to two minutes and you use the microphone to your left if you wish to step up. I will afford you that time now from the public.
My name is Jen Weitzel and I have two kids in the Carroll County Public School System. I'm also a current part-time substitute teacher. I've reached out to you all on a number of occasions with my school capacity concerns and the denseness of even the revised pre-concept plan and how that continues to worry me. Tonight, I want to focus specifically on Mount Arrie Middle School because of the shortness of time. Currently, our middle school is at 99% of its capacity. We have the highest class average in the county at 26.9 and almost a quarter of classes have over 30 kids. Some students are sharing lockers. There is not enough for each student to have their own. Is this situation expected to improve soon? No. The school system predicts that we will be over capacity every year going forward over the next decade. Keep in mind, this does not factor in potential kids from Green Tree Beck, any future developments. The specific enrollment projections from last year are higher, they're higher this year than they were last year by a significant amount. Last year, if you took a look at the projections, they were between 91 and 101% over 10 years, so somewhere within there. But this year, the projections have increased. The most current for the next 10 years show the school is expected to range between 100 to 108%. So if I just quickly read a few of these from 2024, let's say to 2031. So next year, 100%. The following year, 105, 100, 107, 104, 108, 103, you get the idea. We are over capacity and projected to continue to be over capacity. The enrollments continue to increase at the middle school because of migration. The enrollments, as you can imagine, are based on how many kids they know are here and they can build that in year to year. But then there's always surprise students, students that the school system doesn't actualize yet. But then once they show up at the door, all of a sudden, they go into the following year's enrollments and that's what we've seen, why we see that increase. So I would expect that we would continue to have surprise students because we do each year, especially as there's more migration into Carroll County and Mount Arrie specifically is an attractive area, always going to attract families. So I guess my concern is even to this day, if I call the middle school and ask them, what's your current enrollment today? It's higher than they've even projected it to be for this year. So we're going to continue to see this upward trend of increasing enrollments. So APFO, if we get into the specificity of that when it comes to schools, in the Educational Facilities Master Plan, which is set forth by the school system, it states a middle school is determined to be adequate if the utilization percentage is below 110% of functional capacity. And as the numbers that I just read you show, we're so close right now and that bothers me. It worries me quite a bit. I just don't know how we're going to support new development. Our schools are going to support that without being a detriment to our students. I've talked about blueprint, things like that in the queue, which are already going to affect class sizes. It's happening, it's law, it's not going away. So there's just a lot going on and I just, I worry about the teachers, the kids, the situation. I think that's it. I do have commission members, if you don't mind, I have the data, the actual enrollments for you, straight out of this document from the school system that I'm happy to leave with Mr. Breeding, if that would be all right? Okay. Thank you for your time and your service to our great town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others who wish to make a public comment relative to this specific agenda topic?
Thank you.
Seeing no further interest, I'm going to close the public comments for this agenda topic and what I would like to do now is to make sure that each commissioner has an opportunity, if they have that Q and A for clarity, to the representatives of the application and/or making suggestions for changes. I would again reiterate, as per the town attorney said, if you go into the realm of making suggested revisions, I believe you are automatically asking for a continuance of the joint workshop because such dialogue and exploration of further changes is better done at the joint workshop setting with the council present. Fair enough? Fair enough. So if I may begin with Mr. Bead, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Actually, I don't have any questions for them this evening.
Fantastic. Ms. Hadley?
I just had, can you hear me? I just had, for clarity, one of the comments in the past had been about having the seniors closer to the amenities downtown. And then this new plan, if I'm reading this correctly, the senior housing villas are on the east side, which is further away. So I was just wondering why they kind of got put on that side instead of closer to the library and the senior center and all of that.
Yeah, the villas on the east side were always there. That's not a change.
Okay.
The change was we eliminated the senior apartments on the west side.
Okay.
And there was a variety of reasons for why we had to do that.
Could you elaborate?
There's the comments.
What's that?
The comments.
Yeah, there were several comments that asked us to eliminate them.
No, not the apartment, I meant like in the, just for my clarity, the seniors being on that side, it would be harder for them to get to the stuff downtown that they wanted to be apart of.
So seniors aren't restricted from being on the west side. The change that was made was to remove the apartments, which was a direct response to some of the comments that we received at the work session. So that was the reason, you know, but we're not restricting seniors from buying in that west side area. They can certainly do that. The only thing is people under 18 are restricted from being on the east side, if that makes sense.
No, I don't think I have anything new or different to add to it.
Commissioner Bynick?
No, not this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wallace?
I just have a question for clarity. Are the, are the new amenities that you're showing, I know that not the top left, but the other ones that you've now shown, are those supposed to be funded by the town for development or are they supposed to be funded by the developer?
You're talking about on the west side, right?
All the ones, not that one, John, but west and east, all of these new ones.
The, well.
Outside of the three acres.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right. So the amenities we're showing on the plan on the east side that are specifically ball fields, those would be for the town to install? The rest of them were considered part of our developer-provided amenities?
Okay, so just to clarify, so the larger areas on the east side that are supposed to be for ball fields are to be funded by the town, but the little pocket park thing on the left is not? Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. We were trying to give ideas about what could fit. That really gets determined at the concept plan. We're in pre-concept plan, so those aren't part of it, but any of those recreation fields would be by the town. We're trying to show how many can fit because that's been a major concern of what we've heard is recreation. We need more recreation. So we're trying to show the different opportunities that the town could have within the plan.
And so the 55 and up housing, that's active adult community, right? Are there any amenities like that you would find in other active adult communities there?
Yeah, yes. If you look at the images that we showed and also what's on the plan, and as Cecily said, we can't really develop that package of amenities right now. It really comes at the concept plan stage. So we're just trying to respond to the comments and say, okay, this is what's possible.
I guess I'm just asking, are they all outdoor amenities or are there any like clubhouses?
There may be a clubhouse.
Okay.
Yes. And you have to keep in mind that the smaller that we get, the harder it is to provide amenities that the homeowner association can afford because they're going to have to maintain them and, you know, keep them up for going forward.
Yep. And then I had asked in the workshop about the slope on that property and I think I was just told, yeah, it's, you know, it's what it needs to be, but I didn't get the actual number. Can you tell me what the actual slope is on that hill where the trails are?
It's up in here?
In the middle where the trails are? Yeah.
Yeah, at this stage, we really don't have that in front of us, what the slopes are there. I think the response at the workshop was that they're below 25%, right?
Right. But I was wondering if it was below like by 1% or if it was below like by 10% because I'm just thinking if we're having hiking trails and such, you know, just curious.
Well, there's the pre.
Is it going to be heart attack hill or is it going to be like?
There's the slope pre-grading and then there's the slope after grading. So it's too hard to answer at this stage of review.
Okay, so you're not, you are or are not grading in that area? You don't know?
We'll be grading for the road around the perimeter.
But not in the, in the area where the trees are?
No.
Okay. But that's where, that's what I was asking is like where the trails are, is it really, really steep? That's what I'm getting at. Is it really, is it usable where you're going to be like, you know, challenged or is it going to be nice and, you know, flat, sort of like Wildwood is where you can kind of meander through easily?
Ultimately, I hope it's both and, honestly. I mean, like Clark said, that's to be determined. We're trying not to disrupt the slope because that would be disrupting the trees in that area. Like Clark said, we do have to grade around where the roads are to work that all out. But we are, we can try to plan, you know, as we get into the final grading plans, we can try to put the trails to follow the grades. But then there's some merit to having some more challenging slopes as well.
Yeah.
And I will say, if we, if there are athletic fields that are in that area, obviously there's a little bit more grading that's needed to accommodate those fields. That's why we've tried to put them on the flatter areas of the site where we have them shown.
I guess, yeah, the point is that if they're being advertised as hiking trails, I've just, you know, just curious how usable they'll actually be, so.
Yeah, very usable for a variety of people at a variety of levels.
Okay. And then I really just had a question for the town. Now that we have a commission on aging and livability, are they going to, is there any role for them in providing input to, you know, an active adult community? I mean, not, you don't have to answer that now, but I just want to throw that out there.
We haven't got that far yet.
Okay.
We basically have just formed coal.
Right.
So, but I mean, that's, that's a viable and appropriate question down the road.
Okay. Just wanted to throw that out there for consideration.
I'll be cleanup batter here. As you all know, when and if a pre-concept plan is approved and moves to concept plan slash pattern book deliberations, which is the purview of the Planning Commission at that point, to approve it, to adjust it, to make it as good as it can be. My question to you is if we were to explore or suggest a reallocation of the east side only deed restricted senior housing to either, as Commissioner Hadley said, a more appropriate placement of some or all of it near the legacy senior citizen amenities, senior citizen center, library, Wildwood Park, those things that are on the west side, would you deem that to be a necessary, would you deem that to be a significant enough change in this concept that it would be best discussed in a joint council and commission forum?
Yeah.
Understood. If we were to explore, topic two, those recreation fields proposed for town responsibility as being developer responsibility to include access roads and parking around those recreation fields, would you believe that to be better discussed at a joint workshop to explore that feasibility? Are there any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, again, our task is to make a recommendation to the council regarding whether we believe a continuance of the joint workshop as we discussed with the town attorney. Any discussions to explore further revisions would be best handled in such a joint workshop continuance. And so with that background, I just ask, is there a motion as to a continuance or not for the joint workshop on the Mount Arrie Crossing Beck property? I will make a motion that there needs to be a continuance because of discussions that will require exploring further changes to this pre-concept plan. Is there a second to my motion? Hearing no second, the motion dies. Is there another motion on the question of continuance of the joint workshop? Hearing no further motion with regard to a continuance on the joint workshop, there is no recommendation at this commission meeting for such a recommendation. The. The task is, has died. And this agenda item is closed. With that, we now shall move to thank you for your time. With that, we will move to item number nine on the agenda, which is to discuss for the first time proposed edits to chapter nine of the master plan. As background for the public, the update to the master plan has been ongoing for some time in conjunction with Mr. Breeding on the town staff. The commission has been plowing through the 2013 master plan, a chapter at a time. We are, as they say, rounding third and heading home. Chapter nine makes its debut in tonight's planning commission meeting, and it is, it is the opening of that chapter. Your copy, you will see some preliminary edits offered by myself to the federal commissioners, and this is where we begin. We have always at least two review cycles on every chapter. In many cases, the transportation chapter is a good example, the municipal growth element chapter, the land use chapter. We often go well beyond two reviews in order to get it as good as we can. But tonight, we debut chapter nine. So if the commissioners can take a look at chapter nine and the edits, there is-
Ralph, I'm sorry, just to make sure everybody has chapter nine because I think, okay. Can we maybe take a five-minute break real quick, Ralph? I make additional copies for whoever's in the audience.
Certainly. Let's take what, five, 10 minutes?
Five minutes, real quick.
Sounds great. Okay.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
I'm gonna put a piece of white tape on there.
Right. Little, little streamer, so it'll-
Something.
Yeah. Okay, so, so chapter nine, this is our, our commission's first chapter. There is no, there is no end game on this topic for a motion or it is simply us discussing what we think the direction of chapter nine should go in for the next 10 years. And so chapter nine is implementation. So it's the end of the master plan, which basically now provides guidance on how we're gonna make the prior chapters happen. Okay? So it's the implementation piece. And so I basically riffed it off of what was written in 2013 with some edits in here, and we can certainly go through a page at a time. It's not a lengthy chapter, so I think that's a fair kind of process if, if no one's disagreeing on that. So let's just begin with, I show page 157 as the beginning of chapter nine. And so you can see some edits on the first, and all I did there was just basically elaborate on the arrangement that I think we've agreed to. We have a vision in the town that stated in the introduction that vision is underpinned by a set of goals. Those goals now find their way into the next level, which are called objectives, within each chapter. And each objective then has its own implementation, suggestions, guidance, et cetera. So that if you do the objectives, then you're doing the goals. You are accomplishing the vision of the town. It's that, it's that simple hierarchy. So that's what the edits in the first chapter are. I do ask a question in the second paragraph there. I'm not so sure that's needed or not, but I'll pause here and just let everybody catch up on page one.
I'll second the non-needed chapter, or that, that, that second paragraph for you, two seventy-seven through forty-two eighty.
Gotcha.
I don't need that. I think it's too, it's just-
My comment is that overall, I find this to be a very action-oriented and very responsible position for the town to be taking. It's, it's one thing to, to write a plan and so forth, but unless you hold yourself accountable for the follow-through and making sure that it jives with what you're trying to accomplish. I mean, this, this is a long-term responsible action to say, this is what we're going to do and why it's so darn important to follow through on this. We, we took these steps for several years with 2013. We didn't completely follow through with it. But what we did was, I think, a dramatic improvement in terms of what we had done before. So I love holding our feet to the fire and following through on this.
Should this paragraph be in the front, then?
In the front?
In the very beginning, statement of intent.
I actually think this whole chapter should be in the beginning of the, I don't know why it's chapter nine, after we go through all these other steps, and then we're looking at implementation on chapter nine.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It kinda doesn't make any sense to me when, with this should like be, this should be the introduction, and then this implementation strategy, and then all of the chapters preceding it.
What do you guys think?
What does everyone think about?
Well, no, it make-
I agree. That's a very good point.
By the way, I missed the meeting that we, that we did the vision statement. Did we ever lock in the vision statement for the town?
We have, we have like three or four, right, Ralph?
We, we have decided that we are going to send four example vision statements.
Okay.
I believe you authored one, and then we had the 2013 original that we wanted them to compare. And then I think we had two other commissioners' ideas with a succinct kind of where we want the end state of the town in the next 10 years.
Awesome.
So, so, long answer, but where we decided on that, because that's fundamental to driving everything else.
Yeah.
Right? And so what we decided to do on that was, they were all four very legitimate. They all said very good things. So what we are planning to do on that is let the council take a look at all four. They can make a hybrid out of all four. They can pick one. It's, you know, it's their approval.
Leave it up to them. That's good. Yeah, as long as we had like some relative closure. Or it's in the, what you would call the parking lot.
Oh, I love it.
For review.
I love it.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing now, not necessarily getting rid of that second paragraph, but moving in whole this up appropriately to the front to say, what you're about to read, this is how we're gonna make it happen. So-
Why not?
You wanna do that? Okay. Would, would it be fair, then?
Prioritizes it.
Prioritizes it? Would you see it as a first chapter behind the introduction chapter? Or as a part of the introduction chapter?
Probably be part of it.
Just- Okay.
Because it's more or less a chapter sort of coincide with the state of Maryland's-
Right.
Numbering.
Right.
Changing their numbering system would be completely different.
Right. The, the introduction is a brand-new one that's, I think, tolerable because we're calling it introduction and not a new chapter one.
Right.
That's, that's what John is saying.
It'd just be introduction and implementation, right?
I can do that. So what I'll do is I'll move chapter nine into the introduction chapter. And actually, I like that because it'll give me another opportunity to scrub and put a wire brush to the introduction and-
Even all we've done so far, if it's still accurate.
Kind of loop back.
Yeah.
And make sure, because we've had discussions about certain things referenced in our, in our plowing through that we decided, you know, we don't need to reference that plan anymore. You know what I'm alluding to. So we need to kind of do that, kind of start again and look through it all, so.
Do we lose that whole error?
The plan also serves?
Yes.
Did we? Bill, did you have, I'm sorry.
Well, Bill served as one of the discussion. You made the question sort of-
I, I made the motion to remove it, and I thought on the coattails, Bill was commenting on the, it being a viable paragraph to keep in there.
Oh, I think he was sort of talking about the whole chapter.
Oh, okay. He was, he was, he was kind of absorbing the whole chapter as a, as, okay, so we're scratching that.
Still wanna scratch it?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, I'll let everybody look at the remaining edits.
Otherwise, I thought it was just, it was right on. It should be.
So then I'll run in again and just emphasis on those last few lines. It does prescribe that we, we make sure it happens by setting objective leads, people accountable, and we set a, we, a quote, routine progress review meeting where we'll revisit the plan and not just let it sit on a shelf. And so those sorts of things, I think, are, are kind of resonating with what you said, Bill, so.
And I also would like to see us go back and basically utilize again the approach where at least once a year, for consecutive years, we're holding ourselves accountable. And we're, we're getting the input of representatives of each of the commissions, you know, as well as the council, and we're holistically saying, and we're keeping our, our nose to the grindstone to say, this is important enough to follow through.
Yep.
And that's the only way we're ultimately going to get what we, we want and what we need.
I think that should be held in December. I'm just wondering, I'm trying to figure out the right date to-
Oh, that's a good idea.
Create that. Since we don't have a planning commission meeting in December, I wonder if we can shoot for it at December, maybe mid-December or something like that, to do the joint commission meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of other commissions that also don't meet in that month of December for whatever reason, I think. Just a thought.
Or should we look at doing it closer to the fiscal year? Dividing line, so that, you know?
I don't think it really impacts, I mean, I'm, I'm just making a suggestion, I mean, that's, that's not good. So I don't think the budget really impacts this as much possibly. I don't know.
I mean, if you're, if there are things in the other chapters that are, you know, potentially related to some sort of funding need, then doesn't it make sense to have the, the work plan discussed around the time of the budget cycle? That's all.
Should it be May?
Well, or, like, is, is May when the budget comes in for approval?
No.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we're at.
So should we maybe do it in like April-ish timeframe? So that, you know, there's a discussion about maybe what needs to happen in the next budget cycle?
I think we did a spring kind of timeframe before.
I think it was May, if I remember correctly. Because we did do one of those when I first started here.
Okay.
And it's where that one was based.
I think, it's working system.
Yeah.
That's how I was sort of, I don't know, the date for it using first weekend of May or August. Well, then you're talking, it's sort of positive.
No, we need to think about it, and I like the idea of hooking it to the capital improvement program. You know, what we budget ought to align with what we think is a town priority over the next 10 years.
And we could always present the two dates and let the town council decide what would be better. Because they're the ones who vote on the budget and all.
Well, in December, my, December might work because it gives you plenty of lead time.
Yeah.
Before, so, you know, either way.
Then it would be presented.
Yeah.
Gives us six-month window to say, hey, you haven't hit your, you haven't hit your goal yet.
Yeah. Get on it.
Step it, step it up. Exactly.
Forget about Christmas vacation.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm on 158 if, if we can.
I have a question on line 4288 before we move on.
Okay.
The ending sentence, it ends with dot, therefore, dot, dot, dot.
Yeah, so that was, that was Ralph trying to lead into then, how are we gonna implement a work plan? So let's, let's get ready to that.
Can we scratch the therefore, dot, dot, dot?
Absolutely. Can do. Yep.
Ralph, so far, I really, I'm enjoying reading this. Thanks for adding these edits in here.
Oh.
Yeah.
I mean, I should say chairperson.
It is, it's-
Chairperson, yes.
It's, it's just seed corn and goes from here to whatever we need to do, so.
Well, Ralph, also wanted to ask, do you want Tom to stay?
I don't think so.
Are you sure? Wait a minute, Tom, he's got five more minutes. He can bill another hour. Come on.
I don't think so. Tom, thank you so much.
I add value.
Indeed, yeah.
You always add value when you're talking.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We record that instead.
Yeah.
Please, please drive safe, yeah.
Yeah. You too. Thank you, Tom.
So if we can move to 158.
Forty-two sixty-eight.
Do we need it?
No, I like the sentence. It's too long.
And just start with the following focused actions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I love it. I think to tackle first, we don't need. We'll just stop with town deems its most important objectives.
Okay.
Semi-colon. Maintaining the excitement, moving forward.
And so let me, let me just delete something I already wrote. So you can see in the red on 4281 as an example, I thought this would stay as chapter nine, and so we would have a chapter nine objective, et cetera, et cetera.
Gotcha.
Since we're now gonna move it forward into the intro, there is no such objective tagging, if, if you follow what I'm saying.
Yep.
It's just gonna be, we need to do these things. And that's sufficient in my mind, so. None of this goal relationship, objective relationship.
Right.
Okay. And the same comment on the next page, 4265, and so on and so on, wherever you see that. On 159, you can see, I'll just make mention, I excised the previous entry on mixed-use zoning. I also excise the short section on Route 27 corridor master plan. The corridor master plan speaks to holding another, so to speak, corridor study. We have a Maryland 27 corridor study that's dated April of 2017. So I won't say that it's not entirely feasible that we make a prescription for another one. I believe that corridor study of April 2017 was paid for by the town. Barney? Yes. And so if we feel we need to do it during the 23 to 33 period in the next 10 years, then I'm all ears if you want to put that in.
Did we have it in transportation? Do we mention it all?
I do not believe it's in chapter six at all.
Are you sure? That was what we went over just the other day at the senior center.
We did.
And we, I thought, I feel like we, we referenced the Sabra Wing study.
Yeah, we did in chapter six, which I don't-
So, so what, what we can do is if you all feel it's, it's a good thing to do because 27 is such a vital, major artery, what I can do is make it an objective for the town to conduct another corridor study, let's just use that term, another corridor study on Maryland 27 as an objective of Chapter Six.
Yeah.
And then I'll run it by Ms. Regal and whomever she would like to vet it with in Streets and Roads. Is that fair, John?
I guess my only concern is, and Barney has his pen up if you don't, if you notice. So, you know, again, I guess the timing on that. And I was going to defer to engineering on that. On, you know, what is the proper timing? What facilitated this corridor study? Because it was prior to me. And again, has it happened every 10 years? Is it 15 years? Do we just use the data that's part of a development project? So I would defer to Barney and again, he did have his pen up, so.
So generally, I don't think a small town normally does that big of a study on a state highway coming through town.
Okay.
Now that it's on the Carroll County Master Plan as a priority, it could be referenced in here but more leading to what the county is going to be, or what the state's going to be doing based on county's priority. We're more, they're going to redo that study before they actually do a design on it. So that would be the time to do it. The reason we did it this one time is Heather was in John's seat and we felt between the two of us, we had a lot of development potential wanting to come in. We really didn't know what the true impacts were going to be on everything. So we wanted to kind of look at the... And again, it's not just the nine intersections along 27, there was 28 intersections included. We wanted to know what impacts we were going to have on all the intersections kind of related to Maryland 27. So now that we have it, yeah, things are changing, but I don't think they're changing that drastically that you really need to redo the study.
Right.
Currently. I think when the state's ready to do that, that would be the time that that would get updated.
So should we-
So, yeah, the $1,000 question is, it's mentioned in the transportation chapter that there was a study done.
That's-
Do we need to create a goal for another study? I don't think so.
Doesn't sound like it.
Not according to-
But we do need, I mean, should we? We should... Does Chapter Six mention what we just... It doesn't mention what we just found out about, or didn't we talk about us being number five on the list? Because I think that's important to say.
I feel like we did mention that.
We did mention, okay.
I feel like I brought that up because 27 is kind of the same one.
Yeah.
I'm kind of invested in that being bigger.
I'll check on that. That's in the county transportation plan to the state.
We should have-
We can reference the county for that.
Can I just ask a question? So if this is supposed to be the implementation plan, like the action, this is where we're going to lay out the action plan for what's in the rest of the master plan, right? So are we sort of putting the cart before the horse? Because we don't have finalized input from the council on what's been put in the other chapters? And should the action plan be something that's done at the end? Like, so that we have, you know, okay, now the master plan is mostly written, it's mostly approved. Now we kind of, in a unified maybe workshop with council, or maybe not, we can do it either way. Then do we come up with the action plan based on, okay, this is like the final, we kind of all agree on these chapters and then we can kind of pick like out of these chapters and based on the objectives what the priorities are for implementation?
Well...
Because I mean- How much of a meat cleaver they take, the council takes to everything? A meat cleaver.
Yeah. I guess we present what we came up with and town council will take their chop at it. And then we meet in the middle, I guess?
It should be for a year.
Yeah. I mean, we can make suggested action items, they don't have to agree with us, right?
I would defer to Bill, of course, he was here during the 2013 master plan. I don't think that you had a joint workshop with town council and planning. So we, planning creates the document and they forward it to town council for their final review, approval, and modification.
At least that's the way we did it.
Right, not to say we can't change that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering how, I mean, can, are we at a point, and maybe we are, are we at a point now where everyone agrees that based on all the work we've done on the previous chapters, we can now say definitively, these are the actions that the town needs to take? You know, these in prioritized order? You know? Are we ready to do that right now? That's all, that's my question.
That's a great question. We could prepare ourselves to be ready for that right now. And then we can wait for Carl Munder to come up with some of his new ideas. And then that way, we can go, well, I mean, we can prepare ourselves for it to be complete. And we can say, okay, we'll go through the chapter, we'll do our edits and create and build upon it and then hand it over to them to... We're going to have to hand it to them anyway.
Right, yeah. I just didn't know if we were at a point, could we just kind of... If all the chapters are pretty much done, can we just extract like the objectives out of those chapters and then create an action plan? Rather than trying to go through a nine-year-old action plan or 10-year-old plus action plan and just try to edit what someone else did?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can totally subscribe to that. Starting with the 2013, we kind of see what has been done before. But I like your idea that we don't have to adhere to a Chapter Nine.
Right.
And we can write our own implementation guidance. I would also add one more thing and that is if you look through Chapter Nine, and I was going to kind of save this as part of that discussion, moving it forward, moving it back. If you look at the sections that are in this Chapter Nine, they're under natural resource policies, do these things. Well, Chapter Three is natural resources.
Right.
That has objectives.
Yeah.
Right.
Why couldn't some of this wording find its way into something we need to do in Chapter Three? And zoning, that's Chapter Four, land use and zoning, if I'm not mistaken. So would it be appropriate to take some of this wording out of this Chapter Nine in the back?
Yeah.
And put it in Chap... Do you see where I'm going?
I was thinking the other way around. Like, if you have to have an implementation plan laid out in a chapter, whether it's in the introduction or wherever we're putting it, should we just extract from the chapters that we've already worked on with the objectives that we already have? And then just take out the ones that we need and stick them in there?
So you have one stop, almost executive summary.
Yes, exactly.
Of what we think we need to do.
Exactly.
I remember, I think that was one of our council members' goals, was to create some sort of cliff that you would-
Right, right, right.
He's right there. Yeah.
Keep back just in time to hear that.
Yeah. So it's almost-
We just made this evening.
Yeah.
He can go home and sleep now.
Every, yeah, because everything in here should be consistent with what is in other chapters.
Right.
And then we just have our opening executives and so it's all clear from the get-go.
That's wonderful.
If everybody likes that idea, and I kind of like that. How about, so there's two efforts, I think, wrapped into this suggestion. The first suggestion is those things which talk to other chapters, natural resources, zoning, land use. I'm looking at page 160, public facility and infrastructure policy. We have Chapter Seven on public facilities, right?
Right.
So rather than confuse a reader by saying, what's this little piece on public facility policy when I have a chapter on public facilities with, you see what I'm saying? So let me pull these pieces into the appropriate chapter as another draft objective. Job one. Job two, let me then align with what you suggest in that all of those chapter objectives and implementation strategies get pulled into a tight
Yeah.
last section.
Yeah.
Right, because then when you're actually ready to do the action plan and you're going to review this every year, it's a very simple, like, lift and shift of that information, right?
Go right there.
Right.
Yeah.
And if you need kind of clarity, then go to the chapter.
Right, exactly. This is what it is.
Yeah.
That makes sense, okay.
Yep.
Any pushback on any of that talk?
No, I'm in complete alignment with that idea.
Okay. Then we can, and again, I'm going to sound like a broken record. You go to 161, renewable energy and recycling, we have a section on that.
Right.
Sustainability, what is it? Environmentally responsible, those sorts of things. So, okay, so I think Nine will come apart and fall into pieces of existing chapters. And then I'll bring those-
A nice summary.
A nice summary of everything into a new Chapter Nine on implementation. Got it? All right, I'll put that in my job jar and-
Is that Chapter Nine still going to be Chapter Nine? Is there going to be introduction and strategic objectives?
No, I think what we've decided is we'll keep a Chapter Nine in implementation, but it'll be different than this.
Okay.
It'll be that executive summary of everything we think needs to be done. We will not move Chapter Nine up into intro. So it will now come back as a new Chapter Nine, but it'll be a different take. Is that fair?
Yeah.
All right. Do we need to go through Nine at all?
I'm sorry. I do think that it's worthwhile still, to Brian's earlier point, to put some of the language about implementation into the introduction if it's not already there.
That's fair. Okay.
What did you say, Heather? Lift and shift. She used the term lift and shift. So if we're looking at the introduction and we're lifting the document and we see all those objectives lined out there, then anyone can look into the first introduction of it and get the listing of all the, the synopsis of all the chapters and the goals that we're going to reach in those chapters. Without having to read the whole thing.
Being prior army, when you say lift and shift, you are talking artillery talk. Because in the fire support annex of your O Plan, there is timing on when forces move forward and you lift and shift-
Yes.
The artillery.
We adopt all kinds of language, don't we?
But I'm well beyond the commission here on- Oh my. If, yeah, exactly. If that's a good closure on Chapter Nine, I know what to do for us to have the second review. And so if there's no further on Chapter Nine, we'll move into council liaison report. Councilman Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. For the March 4th Town Council meeting for new business, we discussed the Flatiron Building with representatives from Brennan and Company. We were provided with three different plans and detailed discussions on each. We discussed also the idea of policies and standards on conduct. While attending meetings outside of our liaison roles, we'll be discussing these in depth in the upcoming months with the help of Mr. McCarron. For ordinances, we had ordinance 2024-1, budget amendment to add $20,000 in revenue to the general fund from a donation from the Historical Society and a $10,000 grant from Preservation Maryland. That was approved unanimously, five to nothing. Ordinance 2024-2, to repeal the Cable Television Commission and establish the Commission of Aging and Livability Coal was approved unanimously, five to nothing. And ordinance 2024-3, budget amendment was introduced and seconded and will be discussed at April's meeting for approval. This is for the new pump at Sewer Station Three, right, Barney? Sewer Station Three. And then since we had a new commission, we had to have some new appointments. So the appointments all approved unanimously for the new coal is Adele Connolly, Diane Linton, Mary Hushour, Mr. Bill Butts, Wayne Evans, Roxanne Hemphill, Carmen Pelzer, and Sandy Minnerick. Our next council meeting will be April 8th, not the first in observance of the Easter Monday holiday. And that is all I have for that report.
Any questions to Councilmember Evans? Thank you so much. And John, zoning report? Any high-interest items there?
Not this month, or not last month.
Yep.
If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
No questions on the zoning report. Then our last two mentions are, our next master plan work session date is April 11th. The schedule identifies it as a very extensive work session. Chapter Seven comes back into play, if I'm not mistaken, or Chapter Five. It's a chapter we talked about that has other commission input.
Seven.
Seven. Got you, public facilities. So, and we're going to invite those other commissions, recreation parks, sustainment, as best we can.
I will invite them.
I will invite them. Got you. All right. But I'm not going to go into what all is on our plate for April 11th, but it is a very busy evening. And that will be at Town Hall at 7:30, right?
Right.
Got you.
I thought you said you wanted to start it at seven, but I wasn't sure.
You know, we did talk about that. Does any commissioner oppose beginning that because it is so extensive that evening? Does anyone oppose starting at seven versus 7:30?
Might be smart.
Yeah, we may need every bit of time. So if we can make that mention and change on the public website.
Make sure the calendar is correct.
Got you. Seven o'clock then, hopefully on April 11th. And our next commission meeting will be for April, the last Monday, that is April 29th. And no public hearings associated with that, to my knowledge. So we'll start at our regular time at 7:30. Prior to adjournment, I'll just quickly poll the commissioners if there's any last strikes. Commissioner Wallace?
Just that I'll probably be a little late on the 11th.
Okay. Commissioner Bynett?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Butts? Hadley? Commissioner Bida? Jason? Great. Then it is roughly 9:15. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.